I call this meeting to order. This is the regular school board meeting of the Northfield Public Schools. And it is Monday, April 22nd, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a few items in our table file.
Yes, we had several items in the table file this evening, including the narrative for this evening's District Youth Council Year Recap. We had the presentation from Wold Architects and Engineers regarding the Bridgewater addition and renovations. There's a gift agreement and a number of personnel items, including appointments, increase, decrease, change in assignment, a leave of absence, a retirement, resignation, and also some additional supporting data for the Technology Services Student Device Lease Presentation.
Excellent. If there's no objection, we will add these to the agenda as we move forward. Now is the time for public comment. This is an opportunity for residents of the Northfield School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? No one coming forward. We are ready to move on to announcements and recognition.
Yes, I have three this evening. The first is, the School Finance Award for Financial Reporting is awarded annually by the Minnesota Department of Education and their Division of School Finance to recognize schools meeting statutory deadlines for submission of audited fiscal, financial data, and other reporting criteria. And the Northfield Public Schools won the 2019 School Finance Award. This is the eighth consecutive year in a row that we're a recipient of this award. And of course, congratulations to Director of Finance Val Merzdorfer and her just outstanding team that continues to focus on the district's fiscal health by being timely, accurate, and compliant with financial reporting. So, congratulations to Val and the Finance Department. We appreciate all of your hard work, and we're happy that the state once again has identified you as winning the award. Eight years in a row. That's great.
Fantastic.
The Greenville Park Community School joined Alina Clinic in hosting the Free Bikes for Kids event on Saturday, April 13th, at Greenville Park Elementary. Over 175 local children received refurbished bikes, helmets, and locks that morning. More than 25 volunteers helped kids pick out bikes and made sure they were adjusted to the right height. Special thanks to the Northfield Police Department, who was present to register the bikes in case they're lost or stolen. And in addition, we'd like to thank Tom's Downtown Bicycles for donating 175 bike locks. This marked the third time hosting the event at Greenville Park. Free Bikes for Kids rotates between Northfield and Faribault every other year. And finally, the 87th Annual Big Nine Music Festival Grand Finale Concert will be on Friday, May 3rd, 2019, 7:30 PM at Albert Lee High School. And the Big Nine Music Banquet precedes the Grand Finale Concert at the Wedgewood Cove Golf Course at 5:30 PM. And if any of the board members are interested in attending the banquet and the concert, you need to RSVP by Friday, April 26th. And I've been reminded that the Big Nine Music Festival is the longest consecutive music festival in the state, and so that's something that our conference is really proud of. So, those are the announcements for this evening.
All right. Board members, any other announcements?
Ed.
Rob?
A week ago, the judges met to choose this year's sidewalk poetry winners, and I wanted to thank Activities Director Joel Olson, who joined me on the judging team this year. And although we didn't have a public school student among the winners this year, Ann Kopus, who until recently very deeply covered the school board for the Northfield News, was one of the winners.
Excellent. Other announcements of recognition. All right. We are ready to move on to our first item for discussionary reports, which is our District Youth Council's Year Recap. And I'll remind board members that there was a narrative in your packet.
Okay. Hi, we're from the District Youth Council. My name is Alice. I am a junior this year, and I'm also co-chair at the District Youth Council.
And my name is Mira. I'm a sophomore this year, and yeah, it's my first year on the District Youth Council.
Okay. So, first off, we're going to start by introducing what the District Youth Council is. We are a student-run organization, and we serve as an advisory committee to the school board. And we do this by helping inform, by helping give Northfield youth a voice by informing them on issues in the district such as composting at the high school, the issue of diversity at our high school, or informing them on the new elementary schools. And we also ask for their input on these issues through surveys or just doing research within our fund groups. So, this year, we were split into three subcommittees that each tackled a specific issue. We were the Diversity Subcommittee, the Sleep-Stress Management, and Connecting with Administration Subcommittee. So, we're going to start by going over what the Diversity Subcommittee covered this year. So, we began this year by coming up with the issues that we thought were most important to youth, and one of these was the issue or the topic of diversity at our high school. But before we went to the student body and suggested things that could happen, we wanted to know what we could do, and we started with the curriculum. So, we met with Mrs. Hanson and Mrs. Robia to discuss the possibility of having a interest required or maybe elective course that addresses the different types of cultures present at our school. And what we found out from that meeting, which turned out to be a really great discussion, was that going at the topic of diversity through the lens of the curriculum was probably not the best option for us. And from that, we're hoping to gather more student feedback on the culture of NHS and trying to figure out ways to address diversity, such as bringing in speakers during flex or maybe having a specific week, like Diversity Week, to celebrate the different cultures in NHS next year. And next, we're going to go over what the Sleep and Stress Management Subcommittee covered this year. And the first thing we did was we had a discussion over the benefits of getting enough sleep, what the recommended hours of sleep are with Dr. Hoff, and that was really eye-opening to us, and we wanted to figure out what the rest of the student body thought. So, we had a survey on school due for the rest of the student body, and what we found out from the survey was that most youth at Northfield High School, at least that answered the survey, were getting around six hours of sleep, which is three hours under the recommended amount. And our next step with the Subcommittee is to help provide student impact on the Subcommittee, on the committee that has formed, to discuss the feasibility of later start times.
So, the Connecting with Administration Committee, it was formed because we, as part of the District Youth Council, get to go to these board meetings. We get to see what's happening in the school district, and we thought that'd be really nice if other members, other students, got to understand that. So, we hosted a forum for the school board. For those of you who weren't there, we asked questions about issues such as a later start time, the representation of diverse populations at our school, and combating the socioeconomic deficit in our district. So, big questions. And just generally, we tried to make students aware of the discussions that are going on in the school board and the other committees, and that concerned them, and that maybe they could put their input on. Yeah. Another way we provide youth input on district issues is by serving on a variety of committees. We serve on the Wellness Committee, Policy Committee, Finance Advisory Committee, Northfield Forward, Facilities Advisory Committee, Superintendent's Committee on Diversity, Raider Nation Council, and the Late Start Feasibility Committee.
And then, one thing we skipped over was the special projects that our Subcommittee's covered this year. And the Sleep and Stress Management Subcommittee actually made a composting video that we posted to the student body, addressing the different things that we could compost and the things that we couldn't. And we also made posters that you might have seen around the school. And we also had, we also made a survey asking for student feedback on Flex Hour, in which we found that the park and the park time was not favored, and then you can see that in the changes reflected in Flex Hour. And then we had the sleep survey that we talked about earlier, and we also had a successful forum. And thank you for your time. We hope to continue communicating with the school board.
Thanks, Alice and Mira, for coming. Board members, do you have questions? Rob?
I'm wondering, with discussions, for example, on diversity, do you have, you've got, there are students who are serving on the Human Rights Commission. Do you ever talk to them about discussions that might be going on in other places about diversity in the community?
This year, we mostly did research within, like, District Youth Council, but in the future, now that we know that going through the curriculum is probably not the best option for us, we're thinking of getting student impact first from the different youth groups and then just to the general student body.
Amy?
Thank you for the presentation. You're doing a lot of good things, and we always like hearing from the students. I'm wondering, you're in the middle of a number of things, too. Do you have any plans to sort of maintain some continuity over the summer? I know both of you could come back next year. What will you do to just keep these things moving forward?
Yeah, that's actually the topic of discussion for our next meeting. This year, we've kind of moved the ball forward, I guess you could say, for a lot of our projects, and we're hoping to continue the Sleep and Stress Management Committee and definitely the Diversity Committee. And we're just, for, like, diversity, we're going to move forward with what we know right now and just explore further options next year.
Other questions or comments?
So, I just want to thank you for leading the District Youth Council. We're so proud of the student voice that we have started to capture in the last year. Both of you have served on committees, so Northfield Forward, and you've been on the Wellness Committee, right, Alice? Would you, so what we did this year is we really tried to make sure that at every school board committee that we had student voice, because it's about making sure that we get as many students' voices during the time when decisions are being formulated. So, would you just share what you learned by being on those standing committees? Because I think it's a great question about how are you going to carry that momentum forward, but the committees are things that are your work as a board that are ongoing, and so as we change out students on those committees over time, we're going to always ensure that there's student voice there. But I'm curious, what was your experience on those committees this year? Would you just give a very short testimonial about how you felt your voice was valued in that process?
Yeah. Well, for me, I served just on Northfield Forward, and it was really interesting to see, like, all the different ways the school curriculum and the PLCs were implemented and just to see the workings behind that. And also, a lot of the time when I was giving feedback, and it was about a high school-related thing or something that I had a connection to, I could give a lot more detailed feedback because I could say, like, this is what the students think about what you're doing, and this is how, like, I've heard student voice, and this is actually helping me instead of just looking at, like, what the teacher sees. And so, that was, it was really nice to be able to give more detailed feedback on a lot of curriculum changes.
Serving on the Wellness Committee last year taught me a lot about issues that I personally didn't face, but that were actually really important, and I didn't really know what were going on in the district. So, for example, we talked a lot about the options, the healthy options for food at the elementary schools, and I really didn't really pay attention to that when I was in elementary school, and I thought it was really interesting to learn about those things. And we also went over topics like drug use at the high school and getting signage and everything like that. And it was really interesting to be able to learn about those things and even talk about them with my friends, like sparking that type of conversation. And this year, I also served on the Facility Design for Greenville, and I think serving on that really let me meet a lot of really great people that I probably don't usually talk to normally, which was really nice. And we also, I also was able to participate in a lot of discussions with, like, oh, do we want lockers in this place or not? And those are small things for a lot of students that won't be going to that school, but it's actually really important, and it really helped me look back on my own elementary school experience and kind of hope that the kids going into the new school will be able to go into a really great and new facility.
The architects sitting behind you would say that lockers are always an important issue for schools. I just, I wanted them to share this with you because I think there's a way to make it look like student voice is happening, and then there's really having student voice. And I think what you just heard is what I would call real student voice. It's not window dressing. These people took part in very spirited discussions. I got to observe both of them this year, at Northfield Forward and at the Greenville Park Facility Committee. Their voice made a difference, and their voice changed how those groups worked, and that's what the goal of having you involved in the committees is, so committees are. So, thank you for your engagement, because it's one thing to say, I want to be part of this, another thing to show up and actually be part of the conversation, and you both are to be commended, as well as the students on the rest of the committee. So, thanks to their advisor, Malia Fallon, as well, for entertaining that idea that we had of trying to make sure we could expand that. So, really great job by people serving on the committees this year.
Yeah, I would like to commend you as well, just your persistence. Having been at your opening retreat where you formed the ideas that you wanted to work on and then assigned your different committees, and what I really enjoyed is not just seeing the student voice, but that you were always looking to the future. You were thinking about not just what you could get done this year, but if it was going to extend, that was okay, too. So, I think you did lay a lot of groundwork for next year, which is fantastic. And the other thing I guess I'd share with the board is they were really, they were focused on what worked for them, and so sometimes it was with the meetings when it would be in the morning or flex, but you got everyone to come to the room and meet and make some real progress this year. So, I just think, as Dr. Hillman said, authentic student voice is important, and it's been wonderful to hear it and see it in action. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That was a great report. Now, we are going to have Kristen Sakwitz and Sean Kelly up to talk about our Bridgewater addition and renovation project.
Good luck following that, guys.
We could talk about lockers.
Board members, you have it in your table file, your.
Okay, good evening. As mentioned, I'm Sean Kelly with the Wold Architects and a project manager.
I'm Kristen Sakwitz. I'm one of the architects on the project as well.
So, we are here tonight to give a brief design update on Bridgewater. Feel free to ask questions along the way or save them to the end either way is fine with us. We'll get through this and then, yeah, hopefully have time for some questions. So, just a quick agenda. We'll go over our process updates, so where we are in the overall process of the project. I'll talk a little bit about what we've done today, so that's going to include our core planning group update and then the user group portion of the process update. And then we'll give you a little brief window into the schedule in terms of construction and what that's looking like, and then just some next steps on kind of what's going to wrap up, wrap up the project. As always, you know, we're all here because of Northfield's great vision and mission, so we like to include that in all of our presentations. So, here's the entire project kind of phasing. If you see down at the bottom, we are currently in construction documents, and when I say "we are," I mean, we as the architects, we're drawing the project and getting the specs ready to issue for construction. So, what we'll present on today is up through design development, and that correlates directly with the user group portion of the work. And then the next few steps are going to be bidding and then construction and then move-in. So, core planning, we've talked a lot about this with many of the stakeholders, but for those of you who haven't heard our pitch on it, it's really our opportunity to get a group of stakeholders that look really high level at the project. And Kristen will go in a little bit more about this, but these are students, right, as we heard just prior to us, staff, faculty, board members, community members, and it's really important for us because we like to use a criteria-based design process versus a solution-based design process. It helps us work with your guys' criteria versus us kind of driving design principles onto you guys. So, with Bridgewater, this is the referendum scope of work, which includes just shy of an 1,800-square-foot special education renovation, and that's where the current main office is now, and that would require us to rebuild the main office. So, there's about a 4,000-square-foot main office addition out in front of the existing building. This is more or less the referendum scope diagram, and we'll kind of show you where we landed. It's not too far off of what's shown here, but in the middle, you see that kind of salmon pink area. That's the current main office, which will be renovated into special education. Down on the lower right-hand corner is the main office addition in yellow. And then a little bit about, more about the core planning group process. Again, this is really important to us because it's important to have a group that's empowered to make decisions and willing to make decisions and willing to develop criteria. Two of the main goals of this group are to generate a list of criteria, which we'll show in a minute, and then as well as to get critical adjacencies positioned on the building. So, nurse's office needs to be next to main office, or reception for those critical adjacencies and things like that. It's a little bit higher level versus fine-grained detail.
So, with that, like Sean was saying, we like to work with our stakeholders, and part of the way we do that is building a team, a core planning group team, and I know some of you that were on the Bridgewater one are here today. We met three times to go over big-picture items, so where things are going to land within the footprint of the addition and within the footprint of the renovation space. One way we do that is by developing design criteria, and that's where you, as a school, as stakeholders, as students, build on what you guys want to see in those spaces. And so, really, these design criterias are based on your input, not by us. And with Bridgewater, we developed criteria for the office addition, certain things about creating a secure vestibule, but also keeping a welcoming environment for teachers and parents to visit the school in. With the sped renovation, we also want to create dedicated spaces for teachers and students who really are just kind of pocketed away in the existing school. So, where we landed with the schematic design, which was the first phase, is where the addition's going. Really not too much with Bridgewater, as you see. Through schematic design, we landed how those relationships were going to happen. We were going to take over a corner in that salmon pink area, and that was decided through schematic design and the core planning group. And to dive in a little deeper, through the main office, we look at then where those relationships are happening. So, where are the nurses in relation to the office? Where the conference room is going to be? And then, again, with the sped renovation area. Through schematic design, like I said, you'll see a little bit different once we dive into user groups. This was where we landed at the end of that phase. So, we'll go into user groups, which is a little bit more in detail.
So, again, I think some folks are here that participated in our user group process, but really what it is, is we would meet with each group of actual users of the space. So, the folks that are operating out of the main office and the teachers who are operating out of the special education suite and meet with them and get into a pretty, sometimes ridiculous level of detail, basically down to where outlets are going, where your light switches are going, what the switches are doing, what color are the lights, those kinds of things, where are cabinets, are they lockable, how do doors function? So, that's the level of detail we would get into with that group. And again, that's important for a lot of the same reasons that the core group is important. It's really, it's your space. At the end of all this, we don't want everyone to say, wow, we got a Wold building. We want to say we have a Northfield building. So, we really put a lot of stake into these two first processes in terms of design on our end.
So, with that, we composed a user group team, and we did that by breaking it up into each space, the main office addition and the sped addition or renovation. Again, some of you are here. Mainly, these people, like Sean said, are the users of those spaces, who are actually going to be using them every day. So, we had a lot of teachers. We had our principal, Nancy, and each group met twice. So, we presented a design and a layout, and we got feedback from each team on exactly what that all entailed. We revised, and then we go back and show them our latest update. And what we got from that is our main office here. It hasn't really changed too much in terms of relationships from where things are next to each other, but there's a little bit of update in terms of, you know, where things are going in that space. As you see, we really got into detail where outlets are, what kind of fridge is going to be in there, how many tables in a conference room. These were all decisions decided on by the user groups. And as you see, our secure vestibule, that was laid out based on those design criterias that we mentioned earlier about keeping a secure vestibule. So, you walk through the space, you come into the main reception area, and then through there, you're able to access the rest of the building. For your special education suite, it's a little bit different than where we landed with the schematic design. We honed in a little bit more, really, really captured what was needed for special education classes, and deciding on what kind of storage needs, need to happen, how many students need to be in each classroom. It really worked well that this main office was right in the middle, the heart of the building. It creates a great node for these students to come from their regular-day classes or if they need a little bit of special attention. Then we'll dive into where we go from here.
So, from a schedule standpoint, like I mentioned at the beginning, our team is in construction document phase, so we're wrapping up all the drawings and specs this week, actually, so it's getting close to crunch time. So, that'll wrap up this week. We'll bid out in May, May 21st, I believe is the date. We'll be having our public bid opening, where we'll see where our numbers come in relative to budget. And then there'll be a little bit of downtime when contracts are being generated and signed. There's some smittles and shop drawing procedures that we need to go through with the contractor. And then, you know, as soon as school's over, there'll be, there'll be activity. You might even see some before that, but it'll be minor. So, then, construction will start right away in June after school's out and with a move-in of MEA. And then right after move-in, again, there'll probably be a little bit of lull or downtime, but then the plan is to start the special education renovation shortly after that. Yeah, with, I think, a November occupancy on that, so just before, before the Christmas month, so. It's exciting stuff. I think it's moving pretty quick, and everything's tracking really well. Next steps, we, the first one there is something we've actually already done. We did a page turn with Jim and his crew just to look at the construction documents and make sure we're capturing all of the district's standards that have been developed to date. There's a little bit more legwork to do with some of the other technology folks, but we think we're looking pretty good. The next step with the Project Oversight Committee is we'll want to look at finishes. This thing, this project's been moving pretty quick, so we normally would have liked to present finishes and rendering some things today, but just based on the schedule, that'll, it'll happen soon this week, and we'll bring that back to you guys with an update. And then, as I mentioned, Friday, we're issuing project documents, and then May 21st is a bid opening. So, that's it. If you guys have questions, we'd be happy to field them.
I'd like to add one piece that I don't think Sean even knows, that we actually, on Friday, we had some work going on with our Greenville Park user groups, and at the end of the day, we invited Chief of Police Monte Nelson in to sit with Sal Bagley and Caitlin Chambers, myself, and Sam Richardson, and we reviewed both the concept plans for the new Greenville Park building, and we also went through this to have law enforcement give us feedback. And right now, Chief Nelson, very comfortable with this approach, talking about some specific things about some of the finishes inside in terms of lockdown points and things like that, but we just want to make sure that the board and the community know that we've involved our local law enforcement to look at what these plans are like and make sure that they feel that we're on the right track. And so, of course, this is going to be far better than we have now for a secure front entrance at Bridgewater. They're pleased with that, just getting through some of the details about badging in and badging out and some of those kinds of things. But I don't think we even gotten to tell Sean and Kristen yet, yet we took advantage of the time when we had Sal in on Friday and brought Monte, and we went through the whole thing. So, just so board members know, we reviewed this with law enforcement as well.
Great. Board members, questions? Rob?
Okay, this is maybe a picky thing. I'm just wondering about the toilets in the office, if they're gendered or if they're all gendered? Because one, you can only get to through the Nurses Office. So is that a specific one just for the nurse or?
So there's, there's two toilet rooms in the office. There's a single-use toilet, so it'd be both genders for staff and maybe visitors. And then in the Nurses Office, there's a toilet dedicated for that nurse, Nurses Office, with a shower, a rolling handicap shower.
And then my second question is, going by Green, I mean by Bridgewater last week, this is going to cover up where the actual name on the building is. So have you thought about where the name is going to go when you renovate it?
Yes, there'll be signage on the new entry. It'll, it'll essentially have a new, completely, not completely different looking, but a new kind of classy looking entry that, again, we'll bring to the project oversight committee and make sure that both the signage is the right size. We don't want it too big, too small. There's a lot of considerations there. And then it says the right thing. You know, Bridgewater Elementary seems like the no-brainer, but we've been surprised before. So.
I think that's pretty safe. And just, I think it's important to remind you that Bridgewater, unlike some of our other buildings, does also have that street sign. You know, if you're on Jefferson Parkway. So, you know, in addition to whatever signage goes on the building, we also have that marquee that's on Jefferson Parkway.
Amy?
This question, I think, is more for Matt. So when the special ed people move into their new digs, is there other space that's opening up in the building than is that classroom space? What's going to be happening there?
So there, Mrs. Antoine has a relatively sophisticated, what I would call domino chart of people moving from what are really closets. So there'll be people moving from closets and/or classrooms into these new spaces, which are going to free some smaller classrooms that are actual small classrooms or closets. You're going to be seeing people bump into larger spaces and we might even capture back some storage.
Yeah, I like storage.
Yes. So that's, the intent is to make sure that people are in appropriately sized spaces. And so there is a domino effect, which is not written in stone yet. I know there's some, some concepts of who would go where, but that will be finalized yet this spring and as we move into the fall.
Thank you.
But some closets will go back to being closets as opposed to instructional space.
Jeff?
Jeff Quinell here. Thanks for all your work. What year was Bridgewater built? About that long ago, is it?
1996.
When it started, yeah, probably opened, I think.
My question, I think, why, where the administrative offices put in the middle of the building, it seems so obvious with security reasons and things that, you know, office additions would be on the outside. I mean, is that a trend or security? I mean, obviously, you want to build your, you know, build your schools like a very comfortable Fort Knox nowadays in any day. But what comment do you have on that?
So this would be obviously pre-Columbine and a lot of, you know, of those things that have happened in the recent decade. Philosophy's changed constantly on, on how schools should function in all public buildings, really. But if, if you were to tour a set of 1990, or 89 to 95 buildings, you'd be surprised how many main offices you'd find buried in the building, high schools to elementarys. So I would chalk it up to that was the standard, I mean, in general. So it wasn't, security and intrusion wasn't a topic.
And the concept at the time, if you think about Bridgewater and you think how it works, the concept was, we have a gym, it's a large gym, but we don't want people to have trapes through the building to get to. So that was immediately on the right. What's the other space that the community often uses? It's the cafeteria, it's immediately into the left. And I agree wholeheartedly with what Sean has said. Before 1999, 2000, it really, the media center and the offices were intended on being in the middle of the building. I just had a chance to be at, why is that a high school built around the same time as this building? And there, the offices, there's an office on every floor of that, a very gorgeous building and in the middle, exactly where the Bridgewater offices. Now, there's been some changes over time with those secure entrances. But that was very much, you wanted people to have access to the public spaces as soon as they walked in. And you didn't want people to feel like they were having to go through security. Again, of course, that has all changed, you know, in the last couple decades, unfortunately.
Other questions? I had a couple. So tell me a little bit about, this is really exciting, that how quickly this has moved and that we're going to see the, this particular building opening up in the fall. So tell me, if I'm a Bridgewater parent, what is my experience going to look like at the beginning of the school year? And then how will it change?
So Knutson's the construction manager. We can help you with that question, no problem. But they're in charge of the phasing and the process of how the building gets built. But the way that we're planning is that on the first day of school, the entire building is out of the ground. It's weather-tight, it has a roof on it, it has windows in it. It's basically done in terms of construction. The work that would be happening from mid-August, MEA would mostly be finishes within the side of the building. And the intent would be to get the entire secure vestibule in this new corridor built and finished. So as a visitor, you're not stepping over plywood and construction folks and barricades and that kind of thing. One piece that might be a great project oversight committee topic would be procedures on security at this point. Because like I said, this part of the building will still have construction activities inside of it. So, you know, we may or may not, hopefully, we'd be able to route through during the day and have a temp office of some, some sort set up. But that's probably a procedural thing that we would need to work with that committee on how that exactly functions. But you should, before and after school, it should be, you know, free in and out access.
And then the other question I had is that, was there any, ever any discussion about that middle circular space with all the clouds that's right outside the office? Is that, is the, with the change in the office and the special ed, is that space being envisioned differently?
I think that space will still function as it does now, as a node for kids coming in for lunch and for after-school activities. We're really, where the main office is now, it's all within walls beyond that, that nice atrium that you have. So really, there shouldn't be much effect to that. It might actually be enhanced now because you'll have your office up there and you may have more activity than for school. It's really on, I guess, to fill it in.
Great. Amy?
I do have one question I just realized. How tall is the addition compared to the current gym wall?
So if you're familiar with the building, which I'm sure you are, where the cafeteria is, the height of the top of that wall, we're matching that. So it really looks like an extension from the building. And your gym is actually going to be tucked away behind that main addition. So it won't seem as large and foreboding. Yeah, that's the gray line that you see right there. So we're, we're kind of wrapping it and if you're aware of how that brick changes on the, on the gym wall on the exterior, it's going to be about that height.
I'll go and look at it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great. Rob?
Maybe this is when you can't answer, maybe Matt could. For kids who are going out for recess during the day, I mean, are they going to be going through the secure entrance? Because that kind of a bit defeats the purpose.
So remember that the, if you know, there's that couple of separate entrances that go directly to the playground on the, is that the, would that be the east side of the building, Sean?
The west side?
Right, the west side of the building.
Yeah, they come out through that.
So there's, when you go out to the playground, there are two doors, at least two doors that students exit from. One is from the cafeteria, another is from one of the wings. Those entrances are both carded with a, a security card. So no students, students usually don't go out the front door typically to get to recess. They typically go out those side doors. And then they can be, they can, staff can use their badge to come back in. So those doors are secure, they just use their badge to get in and out. So the, what will happen for the playground will not change. That will be the same process that they have used, you know, to this point.
Well, thank you so much for coming and sharing this information. We're really excited about all the building projects. So it's, it's nice to see the one that's further along.
Thank you for having us.
All right, we are ready to move on to our third item. We have Director of Student Activities Joel Olson here to give us a winter sports activity report.
We have Dr. Hillman in school board. Reporting on the winter activities for this past winter. I'll send some highlights out to you. There's some awesome additions that I wasn't able to get to Anita in time. So I have those, but she has those that she can forward on to everybody. The big thing I want to point out is, if you look at our student enrollment of 1,372 students, 86% of our kids are doing something, whether it's in athletics or activities, fine arts, and that doesn't count our clubs. And so you would, you could assume that we have most of our kids participating in something in our school, which is, which is really great, you know, which is something we really want kids to have a place to be and being around caring adults that can, that'd be with them at after-school activities. So I broke it down into each activity and how many kids participated in each, including athletics, our other competitive activities, fine arts, and then you'll see clubs down at the bottom. Some of the highlights from achievements and accomplishments. The swim team, the boys swim team, won the section and took second at the state tournament this year. The wrestling team won the section for the second time in history and placed fifth at the state tournament. And I'll add an addendum to that, the stars aligned for that where both Forest Lake and East Ridge, the two schools where I was in AD before, we were, end up wrestling both of those schools and beating them to get fifth place in the state tournament. So that was a very nice.
We call that Providence.
Girls hockey team won the Big Nine Conference this year. Gymnastics team sent five girls to the state tournament. They ended up not going as a team, but had they been able to do that, they would have placed at the state tournament with the five girls that were there. Speech team was the Big Nine champs, I think, for the first time. And then six individuals went to the state tournament. Boys and girls basketball, both were runners-up in the section, both lost to Austin. Josh Beisel and Caroline Pritchard were our AAA winners. And then the weightlifting team has, hosts, hosts one of the largest meets in the state here at Northfield. State individual participants, you can read through those. We had a large, large number of kids do very well at the state tournaments, including Traitor Anderson, who's a state champion in wrestling this year, and Drew Woodley, who was a runner-up in wrestling. Mason Zick, Rachel Kelly, participating in the state All-Star Game, I think, as well as one of our girls hockey players as well. Speech, you can see the, the list of kids that made it to the state tournament there. Our chess team is a six-through-12 program and have done very well in that. And then DECA, you know, there's a whole list of kids that participate in that and have done well at state tournaments. What you don't have on your sheet is, is important is the academic piece. And you can look there, the academic awards go gold and silver. And this year, our boys alpine, girls alpine, girls basketball, boys swim and wrestling all earned silver academic awards. So the total GPA of those teams were 3.5 or above. So that says a lot about the kids, not only on the competition floor, but also in the classroom. Fine arts, we had three one-act plays, all directed by our students. And that was an exciting piece to have kids, you know, not only act in those, but direct those as well. Mason Zick and Mitchell Stanchina sign national honors of intent to go to Division One and Division Two schools respectively. And then coaching, Coach of the Year honors to Jeff Staub, Doug Davis, Dan Dupay, Leanne Fricki and Tony Matheson. They were all either Coaches of the Year, and then Tony this year had 300 wins as a varsity basketball coach. And Tony just came in today and told me he's retiring. So, yeah, so we got to find a girls' basketball coach. So if you see Tony, please congratulate him on a wonderful 22-year career. Feature items to consider, I'd like to present on the, kind of the updates of our Inside-Out Coaching Initiative. And I can speak tonight to our section realignments. We have parts à la carte coming up this Friday. You can go to that. And then the Big Nine Music Festival in May down in Albert Louie. So that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Board members? Oh, go ahead. Tom?
Well, thanks for this. It's a lot of activities, a lot of participation. Are some of the kids double counted though?
They are. Yeah, so we'll have, we'll have kids that might be in, in the sports, not so much. They might be in a fall sport or a spring sport. You have kids that are in band and choir and orchestra that probably participate. So the number's a little skewed in that way. To break that out would be to count every kid individually that way. But I would still say we're up over 60 to 70% of the kids participating in something. Yep.
And I see you have the boys hockey listed twice.
Oh, I do.
Picky, picky bud.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
And so for the kids who don't participate, are there any common threads, transportation or cost or anything?
What we're finding is, is economics and transportation can be part of it. They might have responsibilities at home that they have to take care of, jobs. We do interest surveys every two years through the State High School League. And that's where you'll find, like Ultimate Frisbee is a program we offer in the spring right now that came about because there was an interest in that. Bowling, some things that come up almost every year are bowling, bass fishing, some other sports like that that other schools are doing. We just need to find a way to make those accessible to our kids. But it starts, it really does start at a younger age. And we met with the Youth Sports Collaborative a couple weeks ago, and they're finding that that's the case, is whether it's the economic piece, transportation piece, that kids aren't coming out. And then by the time they get to high school, they're, they're either not prepared to be in a sport or an activity like that, or they just don't have an interest in it anymore. So, so it's something that's continuous work in progress.
All right. And just one other thing, for activities, anything with video gaming? I know some schools maybe have competitive.
We have, during our flex hour, I know there's some of those activities going down during flex hour. I walked by a classroom the other day and there was some kids in there playing video games. That is a, is a, and you might know or not know this, it's a big deal and people actually go watch people play video games. And that has come to the State High School League to be considered a State High School League sport. That's in the infancy stages, but, but online gaming as a, as a sport. Yep.
Thanks for all your work. It's a great testimony out of, you know, 1,372 kids. We had 1,191, 86% that are participating. I mean, have you found that to be that high in any other school districts?
No.
And what do you attest that to? Obviously, good programming and good leadership.
Great leadership, yeah. No, just kidding.
They're still on. We know your deadpan sense of humor already. They don't.
We're here to lift you up. Don't worry about it. No, it's, it's a testament to what, not only what, like Kevin Merkel started and Tom Groban started, but when you got good people leading programs that are engaged, kids are attracted to that, just like good teachers. Kids want to be in those classrooms and be in those classes. This is not the norm. And I've probably said this many times throughout my first nine or 10 months here, that this is a special place. And what, the welcoming environment, the people that care about kids, the people that stay here after school, that don't just get in their cars and leave to go home, they stay here to be with the kids. And the kids see that. And this is a place that they feel comfortable with, they feel safe in, and that's what we want them to have. So, so it's a, it's a testament to this community and the support that we have.
Well, again, thank you for that. And I think, you know, life, everything revolves around leadership and relationships. And I think that, you know, especially nowadays with the isolationism that comes with technology and things, I mean, people need to learn how to communicate, team build and compete, all of those things. And it's just great to see that great 86% participation level.
Yeah, it's great. It's, it's awesome.
Other questions? Amy?
Thank you for the presentation. I'm wondering, you have a lot of information here. Is it recorded at all in the individual student's computer record?
We have, we do, we have a card file, good old-fashioned card file in the office that, that Cheryl tracks every kid's participation throughout their high school career. And so then they, then if someone wants to know, you know, what were the sports they were in, what did they let her in, things like that, we can pull those names up. And then each year or each season, I have the coaches do a final summary of the season. And it's kind of a history of the season. So then we keep track of that too, in case someone wants to know what happened in 2018, 19, in the winter sports, we can pull those out for them.
So I, it's a card file, everything's written on paper?
Yep.
Okay. Matt, we have to talk.
We do. We have, we have a system, we have a system to do, to do it with, with online in our, in our registration system. It's just taking. our, in our registration system. It's just taking those cards. And it's a lot of hours to be able to do that. And the way Cheryl does it, she's, it's the way she's been doing it. And so, no, we could do it that other way. It's a matter of keeping with the same system we use today, could be a different system we use next year, and those don't talk to each other, at least I don't think they talk when you move from one to another. So.
It just seems like there's a lot of valuable information. I come from an alumni relations background, a college is, so this is just the sort of information we always kept and maintained. And it's useful in so many ways, in both while the kids are students here and then, you know, afterwards. So, and it's great that it's being captured and collected. I would just love to see it collected in such a way that it could be usable.
Do you think as a public piece or for our own?
I think it would be mostly for your own purposes, but I don't know, it's, you know, how schools are going in the future, but I know alumni relations are growing in many places.
I think we could do a really, a better job of reaching out to alumni like colleges do.
Right.
To seek support and to let them know about the good things going on, because there might be people out there that do want to give back. And to let them know what we're doing. And I think we can do a better job of reaching out to those folks.
And certainly, this is, this is the way that people connect with each other and with the school. So this is even more important than their grades or anything. This, these groupings are extremely important.
Yeah, once a Raider, you're always a Raider.
Right. But once on the hockey team.
Exactly.
That's, those are your buds, you know, so, so yes.
And it doesn't have to be the same year. You know, it's, you're a hockey player from 2005 to 1985, and you've got that connection.
So, yes, this is something that I would strongly encourage, finding a way of keeping it so it can be accessible, both, you know, as the years go on and in the long term as well.
Sure.
Thank you.
Dr. Hillman?
I just want to compliment Activities Director Joel Wilson. He's been such a great addition to our administrative team. We're very lucky. Northfield Public Schools has a long history of very high-quality and excellent activities directors. It's very clear in his first year, he's continuing that tradition, really involved in a lot of different activities, making sure he's learning people's names and faces. And so we just want to thank you, Joel. And the desire to come and provide this report to you at the end of every season, just one example, really has worked very well with the district office, worked well with the coaches. So we're really thrilled that you chose to join our team, and we look forward to this as we move forward. Because we know that these activities are, for many students, as important, if not more important than their academic day. And we want to make sure we engage kids, you know, in any way that gets them to want to be here. So thanks for the work that you're doing. Thanks for joining our team.
Thank you.
And we look forward to future reports.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm particularly interested in the Inside Out coaching initiative.
Yes.
Looking forward to that. Great. We are ready to move on to our fourth item for discussion, which is the Policy Committee Recommendations, the first reading of the 900 series.
Yes, so, you know, we're going to ask you to vote on some policies later that you read for the first time at the last meeting. You're seeing the 900 series, which are really things around buildings and operations, things like the visitors to school, district buildings and sites, number of different things that you can take a look at here, including some procedures. Really wanted, these are pieces that have come through, these are policies that have come through the Policy Committee, so that includes some student voice, it includes board members who are part of that. And again, some of these policies have no recommended changes, but we think it's important that we look through them as we go through. You'll notice that there is one 900 series, or you may not notice that there's one 900 series that's not yet ready for you, and that is our facility use policy. Director of Community Services Erin Bailey has been doing quite a bit of research. It's been almost a decade since we updated that policy. That's what governs the fees and all of the different kinds of things that govern how external and internal stakeholders use our facility, especially after school. So that's a policy that we're really taking a lot of time to make sure. I anticipate that you'll get that policy for its first reading, maybe in late May. And look, the goal is to have that in place for July 1 with the rest of these. Just taking a little bit longer, but we just have these policies for your consideration this evening. Again, first reading, not asking you to vote on it. We will ask you to vote on it in the first meeting in May. So if people have any questions about any of the first reading of the policies that we have before you, we'd be happy to do our best to answer them at this time.
Any questions? Great. So this was the opportunity to raise questions, but we will have these come up again, and be an opportunity before voting on them. So. Excellent. We are ready to move on to our next item, which is the non-operating fund budgets. So Val, Director of Finance is going to, and board members, you had in your packets a narrative, an excellent narrative, and slides.
It's the first budget presentations.
Technically, the capital LTFM.
Fair enough, yes. Fair point.
All right. Good evening. So I'm going to go through the non-operating funds, which is our debt service and our fiduciary or scholarship fund. So I'm going to start with our debt service. So just as a reminder, our debt service fund is pretty straightforward. We levy for all of the debt payments that we, that the voters approved. We have a couple that are not voter-approved, that I'll talk about separately, and then basically make the debt payments. That's by and large the only thing that happens there. We are required by statute to levy 105% of the principal and interest payments. This is mostly a credit thing to make sure we have enough cash to make the payments. And then the state goes through a calculation. If your fund balance gets too high, they reduce your debt levy, basically, to make sure the taxpayers aren't just giving you 5% extra all the time. There's also a portion of state aid that was a part of the long-term facility maintenance revenue change. And so that gives us a little bit of state aid that helps offset the total amount that we're required to levy. And then we do have one operating capital and one LTFM bond that were not voter-approved, but basically we have an offsetting revenue reduction in our general fund, in both the operating capital and the LTFM, that help offset that. So it's revenue neutral to the taxpayer. And then other financing sources, I will talk through that when I get to the slides. Usually, this is a very straightforward presentation. There are a few quirky things this year that I will talk through. And then, as I said, the expenditures are really just the principal and interest payments, which are set when we issue the bonds. There's a debt schedule that shows exactly what we're going to pay each year. And then we have a little bit of just fees for processing the payments each year. So this is what the revenue looks like. I have two years of our actual audited balances, the current budget, and then what I'm proposing for next year. So you will see, in 1718, we had this other financing sources, this $154,000. That was the one-time payment. We did a permanent fund transfer from the long-term facility maintenance fund balance to the debt service to make the first interest payment on our, the Bridgewater bond was a long-term facility maintenance bond. And that was a one-time transfer. And now that's included on our debt service levy. That was just a timing thing based on when we did the bond. We had already completed the levy. So that's a one-time thing. And then this year, if you recall, in November, I believe, we did a bond refunding. So that's what that $10 million is. Basically, we refunded a bond that we refunded in 2010. And that is the revenue coming in from the sale of the bonds. And then you'll see on the expenditures, basically, all of that money went out in February to pay off that, that bond. And that refunding saved the taxpayers about $180,000 over the remaining three years of the bond term. And so for next year, we're, we're basically back to normal. So the local levy, the interest generated, we have pooled investments, so essentially, all of the money is pooled, and whatever the interest is at the end of the year, there's an allocation that goes to each fund based on their cash balance at each month. There's a calculation that I run through, so that's an estimate of that number. And then the state of Minnesota is the LTFM aid, and then a few state credits that we get. So just over $6 million in revenue for debt service. And then on the expenditures, you can see the other financing uses is the $7.6 million going out. Oh, I forgot. The $10.3, there's also $2.6 million for the capitalized interest. That's the other amount that's in that number. And so that will be included in our fund balance to help make the first interest payments on the new bonds that we just issued. So, forgot that number. Got to make sure the math works. So the 7.6 is the payment for the refunding bond. And then next year, the proposal is about $4.9 million in principal, $2.4 million of interest, and then the other fees is just our annual ongoing costs. So the important point to note here is that this total amount of interest that we will be paying is not what we will be required to levy. We'll be levying a little bit less than that. I think it's 1.0, I think I maybe wrote it in here, about 1.3 million approximately each year that we will basically pay out of that 2.6 million over the next two years. So fund balance-wise, you can see we're projecting to end this fiscal year at about $4 million, which is kind of higher than our average, but that's because we have the $2.6 million in there. And so that'll go down to about 2.7. And then I expect the following year to come back down to this $1.4 million range, which is pretty typical for us, once both of the capitalized interest payments are done. So this is the principal and interest schedule for next year. This first line here, we will be paying the interest payment, but this is the bond that we refunded. So this is the final payment on that. And then the rest of it was paid off in February. We basically played the last three years off with that refunding. And then we have the Bridgewater refund here. This is the new refunding line. We refunded this 2010. And then this is our new $39 million exciting projects that we're working on right now. So you can see the interest is about 1.5, and that's about 1.3 of that will be paid out of the fund balance, and we'll be levying $200,000 or so. So that's how I come to those totals on the previous slide. And then this is our maturity schedule, which is dramatically longer than last year's schedule, because we added some new debt. So you can see we have a total of about $83.7 million outstanding over the next 19 years or so. Do you want to do questions by fund or just at the end?
We can do it at the end.
Okay. So the fiduciary fund is also more commonly known as our scholarship fund. And this is an extremely consistent fund. It basically accounts for all of the money that gets donated to the district that we then issue out in the form of scholarships. We do have a few kind of endowment-type ones where they gave us a lump sum and we're allocating it out. The guidance office at the high school really coordinates this entire process. And we have more than 80 scholarships from more than 50 donors in general. And the district is the fiscal house for about 50%. So the money comes to us. Otherwise, the other 50%, the students contact the donor directly, and they send the payment directly. So this is accounting for just the 50%. So the financial summary, again, really consistent. The revenue in 1718 is a little bit higher because we had a particularly large scholarship that we were working with, and they ended up making a payment at the beginning and the end of a fiscal year, just timing-wise. But otherwise, we're expecting about $72,000, again, next year. And then a little bit of interest in that fund, just because it's a smaller dollar amount. And about $76,000 in expenditures. That, that really varies each year depending on how many students actually claim the scholarships that they were awarded. We do have a handful that don't claim them, or go on rotary, or some kind of, where they take a year off. And typically, we've allowed them to come, you know, a year or two later and have access to that same scholarship. But a lot of that is donor preference. So really anticipating to end about $177,000. I would expect that to kind of decline as we spend on those endowments slowly. We do have one scholarship in particular, this might change slightly, where we've gotten a significant amount of money every year, but the scholarship we give out is significantly less. And I did a lot of work reaching out to the, I think it's called Minnesota Philanthropy Partners now, where it's through, and apparently, the money that is coming to us is supposed to be going to that fund. So we're going to do kind of a mass catch-up check to get the money in the fund. That was just something that hadn't been happening, and it seemed weird that the balance was growing so significantly, so I dug into that one. So that will be all cleaned up moving forward. But the scholarship will still be the same and operate the same. So, I think. And that's the list of proposed scholarships, which is pretty much identical to last year. And that's about it. It's a pretty consistent fund. So, any questions on those two before I switch over to the next one?
Board members' questions? Rob?
On the principal and interest schedule for the first one, for the elementary early childhood, it says issue date 3/23/2017. What's that?
Oh, I copied the line. I didn't change that.
Okay.
It should be.
January.
January, like 31st is when we issue the bonds.
Okay.
I was trying to be efficient.
The interest rate's a little different, too, isn't it? Because it's pure.
Oh, yeah. It's, I don't know that off the top of my head, though. I will clean that up. Yep. Good catch. Sorry about that.
Other questions or comments?
I had one question. On the fiduciary, so I was a little confused. We had a scholarship in one year that was just a one-year thing, and they made two payments, and that's why the, the one, and now it's back to sort of a, right, the 1718 year.
Yep. So I, I think that the 1819 budget, I think we're going to come in low, because I think the payment was made at the end of the other fiscal year.
Okay.
So they typically, what happens is we get the money in May. There was one year where they didn't pay it till July, and then they paid the next year in May. So we ended up with just basically two in one year. And it's a really significant one, so it's like $18,000.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. I guess if there's no other questions, we can move on to the next report, which is also Val, and reporting to us on the Internal Service Fund budget.
All right. So the Internal Service Fund is always a fun one for me to present on, just because it's been such a great success story for our district. You'll see I added on here that we were awarded, or named one of the Minnesota Local Government Innovation Awards for our work on this program. And by our, I primarily mean Molly Beseman and her work with the Benefits Advisory Committee. So just a little bit of background about the Internal Service Fund. This is the fund that really accounts for our self-insured health and dental plans. We went self-insured for our dental in fiscal year 2006, and then we did our health in fiscal year 2012. The revenue that you'll see in the following slides is really just the premiums that the district contributes and that the employees contribute, as well as some retiree contributions. And then the expenditures are the actual claims that the fund is paying for those who are enrolled in the plan, as well as the cost to administer the plan. We currently use Delta Dental. We currently use Delta Dental and Blue Cross Blue Shield as our plan administrators. These are standalone fund. They're, I keep them separated because we track health and dental separately. So there are two funds in my accounting system, but on our audit, they are one fund, the Internal Service Fund, and they are presented separately. So they're not included in the general fund and debt service fund, which are called our governmental funds. It's considered a proprietary fund and it's on a separate financial statement in our audit reports. So just so you're aware of that. So dental has been really consistent. We have almost always seen increased enrollment for, you can see the history there. The, the one decline in enrollment here in 1718. This was the year that we were the fiscal host for the Cannon Valley Special Ed Co-op. And so then when all of those employees came off. But you can see we went up 12.5 and only down 3. So we were still definitely gaining employees on this plan. We have never increased the premium for our dental, self-insured dental plan. We actually had too much of a balance in the 1314 school year and decreased the premium by half and then brought it back about 25% in 1415 and then restored it in 1516 back to the previous rates, but have never increased that premium since 2006, which is really impressive. And we've actually expanded some of the benefits for staff in that program. So very consistent, pretty easy to manage as far as that goes. So you can see the two, two years of audit results, what the current budget is and the proposed budget, very consistent. We really just anticipate growing that fund balance a tiny bit. The, the premiums are pretty appropriate at this point for the amount of claims that are coming in, even with the increased participation. It works out really well. So this is exactly what I would hope to see from an Internal Service Fund. Slight growth, really consistent expenditures. This is what you would, this is the ideal for sure. So the Benefits Advisory Committee does have a goal, a minimum fund balance goal of 200,000 for the dental fund and 2 million for the health insurance fund. So you can see we're over that goal, not significantly, but over that and growing slightly. It just gives us a lot of flexibility in the future to address any concerns or issues that might come up. So this is the health participation. This one is a little more volatile than the dental for obvious reasons. We did actually see a decrease in participation due to a combination of things. We had some, some retirees that converted to the Medicare program. We had some staff that just switched plans or just un-enrolled. January 1 is kind of our open enrollment date, so the month prior to that, we can make changes. And so we did have a little bit of a decline in enrollment, which is fine. It's not super dramatic. So we're not concerned about it at this point. We expect kind of some of that up and flow. Similar story with the premiums for this plan, which I know you've heard probably a thousand times at this point. But we have not increased the premiums since 1314. They were the same for five years. And we actually decreased the premiums effective January 1, 2018 by a hundred dollars for each program. And that was really great. We worked with the Northfield Education Association to actually reduce the district contribution in their contract and then worked with the Benefits Advisory to reduce the overall premium. So the district saved money, the employees saved money, and it was a really great, pretty much the definition of a win-win scenario. So that's the current rates. The Benefits Advisory Committee did agree to hold the rates flat for effective January 1, 2019, so they will be the same as they were last year again. As far as the summary goes, this has been a little more interesting. You can see our claims from 1617 to 1718 went up substantially. We have had some very significant claims and have been watching them very closely. This also happened to be the year that we increased our stop-loss insurance. So we looked at the previous five years. Our stop-loss is basically, they call it reinsurance. So the plan is responsible for up to 100,000 dollars of claims. Anything over 100,000, the insurance picks up. So we paid administrative fee for that. So you can see our administrative fee went from 892 to 800. So we saved 100,000 dollars by increasing our stop-loss from 100,000 to 125,000. So basically the district took on 25,000 dollars of additional risk per employee. But historically, we've had no more than three people reach that, if not less. That was not the case in 1718, which is the way it goes and exactly the reason you have fund balance, to handle those sorts of things. So we, we did see a really significant year in 1718 that has continued into 1819. It's slowed a little bit, but we do have some very significant claims still occurring for, with our staff. So we're still monitoring that. We meet monthly with our one digital kind of advisor who walks us through the numbers and makes sure everything's on track. And so even with all of that happening, we're still expecting to grow the fund balance just barely. But even holding it flat is a definite win in this scenario when we know we have such significant claims happening. That means that we can hold our premiums flat. Having significant claims like that is exactly the thing that would cause our rates in the co-op to go up significantly. And so our ability to maintain that, to support our staff in their time of need and not charge them more is amazing. It's a great, great benefit for our staff. And we talk about recruiting and retaining. This is an excellent way to, to do that. So, so pretty tough year plan-wise, but again, expecting, expecting that to hopefully slow down a little bit. The revenue is expected to decrease because the participation decreased. Again, interest earnings is the same scenario. Insurance claims are still expected to increase. They suggest that medical inflation is between 8 and 10%. So even with decreased participation, we would still expect that number to go up a little bit. And then our administrative fees. So overall, having 6.1 million dollars when your minimum is two is a great place to be in. We will take that every day of the week. But it's a great, great story for the district and our staff. So I will gladly take any questions.
Excellent. And this is another reason why you heard in announcements the School Finance Award for the eighth year. So board members, questions? Oh, Tom first.
Thanks for the report. I like a higher balance myself with medical things, you know, costs are just exorbitant. I'm curious about the administrative fees. If it's a self-insured thing, and maybe I don't understand what they are, but can't you just give the employees a credit card that deducts from the, the amount? And not, what are administrative fees? They're like 15, 20% of the cost of some of these budgets.
So the administrative fees really cover, so we, we basically pay per, they call them belly buttons, like per, per participant on the plan to run the claims, to process the claims, to basically have everything set up showing what the insurance coverage is. We have access to, I'm not going to think of the term right now, but
Doctors on Demand?
Yep, that's part of, part of Blue Cross's options that we have access to. But for people who are having issues or something, you know, their explanation of benefits doesn't look right or they're having an issue with a pharmacy and a medication and that kind of thing, we have access to what? No, it's not a portal. Basically, we can hook them up with like a patient representative who will help navigate. There's an actual term for it that I'm just not thinking of, so I apologize. But things like that, but it's more the, the administration. We log into their system basically and enroll everyone ourselves. But Blue Cross sends them their insurance card, makes sure that the claims are processed appropriately, all those kinds of backend pieces, if that makes sense. The, it used to include the fitness discount, which is no longer an option. Things like that are included in the fee. There's a lot of different pieces that go into it.
And they call that the third-party administrator. So really what the key thing in self-funded is we're paying our own bills. So before what we would do is we would pay all of our premiums to the cooperative and the co-op would pay those bills. And so when we were in with that larger group, it was intended to make it a bigger pool, which in theory would, you know, in a year where a district might have a bad year, other districts would support them through that. So the key thing with self-funding isn't that we process our own claims. It's that we pay those claims and we hire a third-party administrator to do the management and administration of that for us.
Still a million bucks? Or 800,000?
But the 6 million in the fund balance is all money we were leaving on the table with the co-op.
I understand that and maybe it's a comment on our current healthcare system in the United States.
Yes.
Other questions? Amy?
I have a couple of questions. The first is back to the administrative fee for 201819 and it went up 300,000 dollars. And I was just wondering
This is the budget. So my budget is actually just not correct, I'm pretty sure. I'm pretty sure it's going to come in maybe around 850. I, when I did the budget, I had forgot that we had decreased the, the amount and so we were saving, saving money. So I'm pretty sure my budget is high.
That, that's, that's a great answer.
We always like the high budget and coming.
Oh, I don't like my answer to be that I didn't budget great, but that is the answer.
And then, you know, I, in the news, you hear all the horror stories of people who have their medical care denied by their insurers. And I'm, I know we're using Blue Cross Blue Shield, well-known. But do we have any medical horror stories like that that you hear? Or is the insurance coverage seeming to do what everybody is hoping it would do?
I would say overall, we have really great coverage. My, I personally have not heard any horror stories that I'm aware of. There certainly are always people who wish more was covered. That's a pretty standard thing. I would say the, the thing we hear about most is prescription coverage, which we actually have very little control over plan-wise. But coverage-wise, I would say we have a pretty robust, pretty robust options for our staff.
And I think the key thing there too is that it's not only about having the coverage, which I do think if you talk to people who come here from other districts, they will tell you that they feel we have better coverage for less cost. It's truly, I mean, when we say it's amazing, amazing is overused. This is truly amazing. The prescription piece is something that I've heard from, from time to time because no one has control over what they call the formulary. So from time to time, a medication that will have been used will go off the formulary and is no longer available. You'll need to use a generic or something like that. And that can create, anytime someone's medication gets changed, of course, that becomes a concern. But I think the other thing that we have that other districts don't is Molly. And Molly Beeselman knows more about insurance than, and so one of the reasons I don't think we have horror stories is that when we get to a point where there's a concern, when you talk about an advocate for our employees, there is no one you want on your inside in an insurance issue than Molly Beeselman. She will, she knows exactly the language to talk with Blue Cross, Blue Shield. She knows exactly who to call, how to short-circuit the bureaucracy to make sure you get to the right person at the right time. And so truthfully, she's built the program over the last 20 years. No one knows more about it than she does. And when people have an issue and she's been really doing great work, Andrea Nelson Walker in our office is really becoming our benefits guru as Molly has transitioned into her role of Director of HR over the last several years. She keeps working with the insurance piece because that's something she really enjoys. And you, you not want, I mean, there's nobody better on your side than Molly when you have a concern about your insurance. So we're so lucky to have her and the work that she does on behalf of our employees.
Yep. Patient advocate is actually the term I was trying to think of earlier.
See if I talk enough, I'll figure it out.
Noel?
Thank you for the report. The, the report was good, but the best news probably is how it supports the employees, but secondly, that they don't leave a lot of money on the table of the co-op. That is a real benefit also. Thank you.
Rob?
Maybe I missed this. Maybe you said this, but for the participation for 171 total for the health, what's the total number of eligible employees? I mean, what percentage of people are?
I think we have, so I'm just going to gut-check this number because I don't have that off the top of my head. I would say we have about 630, 650 eligible employees. I won't do the math because math in my head is a scary place to be. But I would say that's roughly the number of eligible employees that we have. And that equate, the 471 equates to just over 1,000 covered belly buttons. So.
Other questions? Oh, Ari, Jeff?
How long have we, how long have we been doing the self-funding and then does that seem to be pretty stable?
Yep. So we've been self-insured for dental since 2006, so super stable. Health insurance since 2012, the 1112 school year. So I think September of 2011 was the first time that we actually were officially self-insured. And overall, yes, we had some really great first couple of years where we had low claims. The, the premiums were, we basically left the premiums where they were with the co-op, which basically resulted in us having the ability to grow the fund balance those first several years to, to where you see it today. I will, we had one year with a little bit higher claims, but we still grew the fund balance. The, the 1718 year has for sure been the worst year we've had claims. We had 14 people exceed stop-loss. And we're, we, we tracked them separately just to know kind of where they're at and what the status is, which is double what we've had any other year. And this year is on track to be pretty high as well. But pretty much anyone you talk to who is doing self-insured or has had experience self-insured says it's a little bit cyclical. They were surprised we had such a great run with so many years, not having a year like this. It's, it's pretty typical to have that once every three to four years. So.
And I think it depends on what you mean about stability. I mean, if you think about the stability for our employees in terms of what the premiums event, I don't think it gets more stable than actually having reduced premiums. Who does that, right? I mean, we've had the same premium or less since 201314. And I think the important, that 6 million dollars is money that would have gone to the co-op. Those are the premiums that we paid that would have stayed with the co-op. So the whole point of it is to create that stability when we have a tough year, that we can maintain the premiums. In the old system, as Val said, we would have swings in those premiums for employees. And when employees can't predict what those costs are going to be, that is not stable and it makes people frankly very nervous. So I think it's the definition of stability. We have built this incredible fund balance so that we can really handle several years in a row, frankly, of catastrophic claims. And what the medical data will tell you is that you don't generally have that. We are in about as good of a position as you could be to manage these programs.
Yep. Well, excellent report. I guess I would also add
Um, I guess I would also add, between the two reports we heard, first, um, you know, that the claims are, you know, with the unusual amount, and that the plan works, and that we've been able to keep the premiums low. And then the previous report, we, you know, talking about the refunding of the bond and saving, go, the savings going right back to taxpayers. And I just think it's really an excellent, um, story, and just commend all the work that you, um, and Dr. Hillman do. The financial services is just outstanding, so thank you.
We just get out of Val's way, so.
All right. We are ready to move on in our agenda. Um, it is, um, the time where we would have committee reports. I think we do not have any committee reports this time around. So we will move on to the consent agenda. Um, is there anything anyone wishes to pull from the consent agenda? All right. I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Seconded by Tom. And I'll remind board members that the, that included things in the table file. Um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. All right. We are ready to move on to our items for individual action. And the first item we have is an approval for a one-hour additional hourly-paid lacrosse coach.
So in your packet, you have a memorandum from Activities Director Joel Olson. Uh, he's asking that we approve one additional hourly-paid, uh, coach for, to be shared between the boys' and girls' lacrosse teams. Uh, they currently have two coaches for each program, and, uh, this program has continued to grow. And so, um, we are looking at just the sheer number of the students and making sure that we have some additional assistance. This would be an hourly, uh, an hourly, um, paid coach. There's a couple of different rates in the contract based upon whether you have a teaching license or not. So we've included, since we don't know who that person's going to be yet, uh, we're asking for a total of ninety hours at a rate of fourteen dollars an hour or eighteen dollars an hour. The maximum expected cost would be eighteen sixty-nine. That does include statutory benefits, TRA, FICA, et cetera. Uh, you can see in the report, uh, the kinds of things that this coach would help the lacrosse programs doing, to do. Uh, you also know that normally, whenever we ask for this kind of approval, we normally bring it to one meeting and then ask you to approve it at the next. This is an unusual circumstance, because we have, uh, those students who are participating in the program right now. And if we were to wait till the next meeting, half the season would be over. So, uh, we felt with the relatively low cost of this proposal that we would ask you to approve it at one meeting.
All right. It is an item for individual action, so, um, if you have questions, I'd like to have a first motion and a second. Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Seconded by Amy. All right, questions? Amy?
I think this is an important, uh, idea, and, but I have a question. Um, how will they divide up the coaches' time? Is there any, 'cause I know that everything's practicing at the same time, the games are in different places at the same times. How can we make sure that that coach's time will be evenly divided between the girls and the boys?
Director of Activities Olson and I have had a conversation about this, and this is all about the scheduling, you know, in terms of making sure that those ninety hours are divided equally between the boys' and girls' program. He's given me the assurance that he'll be able to schedule that in such a way where it will be not just equitable, but equal.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
No, I would just say it's just a testimony of the popularity of lacrosse, and, uh, you know, the gender equality question, I think he just answered.
Excellent. Rob?
I'm just, I'm glad to see the, the participation increasing. I'm just thinking back to, I mean, I was on the board when we approved lacrosse, and, um, I also voted to approve Clay Target. And, you know, as we add these things, we're adding them at a certain level, and then they, you know, as they get more popular, is it, it's good that they do, but that increases the cost of the district. So I'm just wondering if there's any way to kind of, um, plan for that or to control it or something, as we're making these decisions about adding new activities.
So I think, uh, a couple of key things is you'll remember that, uh, we now have, our co-curricular committee over the last several years have made these recommendations for, uh, increase. And you'll recall that a few months ago, we talked about some of those increases at this table, and determined that we wanted a little bit more study on them before looking at them. And there was a list of maybe eight or ten proposed positions, and this is the only one that has come back. So I think that that's a testament to the oversight that we're looking at. And I think the other important piece is that, um, as we continue to grow those programs, I think that you're exactly right. We have to be very intentional about what's the appropriate coach-to-student ratio. Of course, when we see, uh, things like college programs that have specialists for specialists, right? We are, have to remind people that we're not a college program. We are a high school program. We wanna make sure that students are safe and are getting the appropriate instruction. And in addition, over the years, one of the things I can tell you, too, is that it has not happened often, but there have been times where we have seen a reduction in especially the hourly coaches use. The hourly coaches are almost like a contingency approach. Uh, so there are times where we have had more hourly coaches in programs previously, and then, as interest has diminished or changed, we've been able to shift those from area to area. But we now have, it used to be where that was only negotiated every couple of years when we did the teachers' agreement. We now have much greater board control over the need to add or subtract. And remember, these hourly positions aren't things that go on forever. Uh, they're for that season and intended to address the hotspot where there's additional participation.
All right. Excellent question. Any others? Jeff?
Yeah, to address that, I guess with the popularity, and I'm wondering, this is kind of more of a legalism thing, I guess. Can I be, you know, if I'm Daddy Warbucks and I wanna, uh, donate money to an association, can they donate, say, a couple thousand dollars to the school district to pay that salary? Is that illegal? You know, and there's all kinds of associations and things, you know, everyone, the, from the, you know, Hockey Association to whatever. And as the sport grows, and you're adding these additional things, I mean, maybe as a school district, what options do we have to reach out to the community and other individuals that they can do some kind of a legal in-kind donation? To donate, you know, X amount of dollars if they wanted to. I mean, not that that's necessarily an option, but, um, you know, there would be one area to go on, you know, down that road, and I don't know what's, what's legal and what's right, and what other districts do, if anything, so.
Well, the rules have changed on that over the years. And I'm gonna ask Val to talk a little bit about that, and they'll be changing again here relatively soon. So do you wanna talk a little bit about the evolution of fundraising and donations, and how they can pay or not pay salaries?
Yes, I'll give you a very brief preview into, uh, my near future here. Um, so, May of two thousand and seventeen, I think, the Minnesota Department of Education issued new guidance for student activities, um, which is where the teams were able to fundraise for additional coaches for their program if they chose to do so. Um, and effectively, MDE put an end to that. No payroll through student activities. Um, so that was a pretty significant shift. Um, we had probably four or five different coaches being funded that way, um, all of which have trickled through, um, through the board process, I think at some point to get added, um, just because we were unable to do what we were doing. This past March, um, I found out that GAZB eighty-four, I believe it is, uh, which will be effective July first, is effectively mandating student activity accounts will now be under board control, which just means they're in the general fund. That is a major, major change, um, and will be very restricting for some of our student activities. The general fund's not allowed to donate, um, at all. And so, you know, right now, the ALC soy-scent candle program donates money to the food shop. We won't be able to do that in the same capacity. Things like that, the pennies for patients, jump rope for heart, all of those scenarios, um, will have to look a little different. So we're working through that right now. Um, I found out about that in March, and it is effective July first. So, that's been some interesting conversations. But, again, opportunity to partner with organizations in the community, um, or just to think a little differently about some of the programming we're doing. Um, to your point, Jeff, we are allowed to accept donations, um, in the general fund. If we wanted to say, yep, we, only if we get the money upfront can we pay for this coach. Personally, I don't love relying on that, because it's inconsistent. Um, that's harder for the program to, to rely on. It's harder for the kids to rely on. Um, and you can only do it as long as that donor's willing to do it. And then, we're putting our staff in a position where they constantly have to go out and either seek new donors, or, you know, just that it's in, it's not stable. And I'm personally of the view that if we're gonna offer a program, then we should support it and be able to adequately staff it. I would rather see the Booster Club support things like new equipment or those one, one-time bigger purchases that, you know, maybe we just couldn't quite do that year. I just, I struggle a little bit with donating for staff time, just for those reasons.
And I think it's a good example, too, about the change in the student activity funds. For years, as Val said, we had four or five teams that fundraised for an hourly coach. And now, when that rule changed, um, it was, they've had those coaches for a long time. And so now, it becomes an expense that we couldn't look at those, we had to recommend that we needed to move that to the district budget. So in terms of Rob's question about, um, maintaining control over those expenditures, if you have someone who is very generous and comes and funds a coach for, say, four years, well, now, nobody in that program ever remembers the program without that coach. And if the donor is no longer able to, uh, do that, there is an expectation on the part of the parents in the program that, well, we've always had that coach, why aren't we having that coach anymore? And so, that is a case where, well, now the district has to pick that up and really has not been able to have as much control over that process as we normally would have.
Yep. My, my other point, um, or consideration when, when we talk through things like this is just the potential for inconsistencies between programs, because you might have more support for one program where they, you've got eight donors willing to give you eight coaches, and another program where there's not that support. Um, and that really creates some, some deficiencies for the students' experience.
Great questions. Other questions? All right. Well, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the one-hourly additional paid lacrosse coach shared with the boys' and girls' program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. We are ready to move on to our second item for individual action, which is the Technology Services Student Device Lease. And, um, Kim Briskie is here to share some more information.
Indeed. Um, I have mostly information that you've seen. So, um, some of the information that we had at our last meeting, and then a couple updates that came up, um, even at the last meeting. So, um, here we are again, supporting our mission to equip our students for the dynamic world, um, that they will engage in. So, that's the reason behind all of this. And I was just determining that I myself am a, you know, am a questioner by nature. I think this is not a surprise to some people. Um, and my questioner nature loves to, to come back to something like this that says, why do we do this? And not just focus on the logistics of everything, the rules of everything, but the, the why of everything. So, um, this is the process that we've been through, um, that you've seen here at, um, various meetings. We're doing a licensed staff survey, and we've shared some of those results, especially the ones relating to the high school, where we had the most questions on devices. Um, we did our K-12 parent survey. Excuse me, we shared all of the staff survey results. Um, and on the parent survey is where we shared those with the, the high school responses, um, and the, the impact that they would have on this decision. We had the district focus group to look at device options between Chromebooks and iPads, and what are the needs of our students, and what are the goals we have moving forward. We had some in-person feedback with teachers here at the high school with various devices for them to see and feel and try out, get some feedback on. And then we, uh, most recently gathered a little bit of feedback from our students. And so, previously, I had, um, met with District Youth Council and brought some of that feedback from that meeting. Um, and then last week, I spent a few days, um, here in the Media Center through the flex period, um, Monday through Wednesday, and then also a full morning and a full afternoon to catch people that are in study halls or times that they would have some access to come and visit, um, just in the Media Center. So with, with the iPads as examples of, here's what we're looking to lease, what are your thoughts on them? I had maybe, I would estimate, I was fairly busy with students coming through. I would estimate maybe a couple hundred students came through and looked at the devices and, um, talked a little bit. Whether or not they took the survey, though, well, we know how many did. Forty-three did. So it's a pretty small number that took the time to give the feedback. Um, so you can see, I added into the table file the results from that survey. Um, pretty positive overall reaction to the, to the iPads in front of them and to the use of that Logitech Crayon that we've been talking about, providing to all, with all of our iPads in the next lease. I did ask the home internet question. Forty-three students responding. We don't have a, a good sample here to base much on this. It's pretty similar to what we've seen in the past, though, at, you know, four or five percent of our students do not have home internet. Um, I would love to do a broader survey of our students of that, and that probably will come at some point. A lot of what I was looking for from students was, what do we do with this device? Um, if this is our leased device, what do we do to provide for all of the rest of your needs that it does not meet? And so, we know that, um, a Chromebook doesn't meet all of the needs. We know that a laptop doesn't meet all of the needs. We had students say, why don't we just get iPad Pros? Why don't we just get MacBook Airs? Um, that's a cost piece right there. Um, so we're really looking at Chromebook or iPad for those reasons, and neither one of them meets all of the needs. So, given this is the device that we've had the most consensus to move forward with, what else do you need? And that's, I think, the biggest question. Um, aside from the lease recommendation, but the what do we do next to continue to support our students across all of their content areas and whatever it is that they need to do for their schoolwork? So, um, the, the top choice with the smaller set of students came out pretty clearly as they want an option to purchase a keyboard or a keyboard case. Um, the very next one is check out Chromebooks here in the Media Center. I was surprised that half our downlist additional Chromebook cards to place in the classrooms where they might be working on things ended up. Um, but some, some pieces where they can type are clearly one of the, one of the needs. And that's, that's what we've assumed. Um, it's looking at, how do we provide for that? So that's some work still to do in the, um, outside of the lease. What else do we need to, to still provide? And I think we can, we can move forward with that, um, in multiple, multiple different ways. So, the recommendation remains the same as we saw at our last meeting here, um, to enter into a four-year lease, um, with Apple for four thousand two hundred, iPad sixth generation with the crayon, and with the, with the case that holds that crayon. Um, we do have the option in that lease, um, structure to renew the lease early at three years, and then you just leverage the value of the devices, sell them back to Apple. They put that towards your, you pay off your, your fourth payment. Or if we make that fourth payment, we would own the devices. Um, and that comes out to four hundred and three thousand dollars a year for the lease. We've seen this grid as well, that shows the, the cost fiscal year over fiscal year. So we're currently in fiscal year nineteen, and you can see those, um, payments that we have made already for fiscal year nineteen. We have those two outstanding payments for fiscal year twenty, uh, which we anticipate covering with the resale of our current devices. Uh, the funding, total, um, we have a total approval at this point of four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, which has been for the last three years. Um, the, what we're proposing with this four hundred and three thousand dollar a year lease is a one percent increase. That includes the twenty-four thousand dollars of management fees for enrolling the devices in our man- management program and being able to get content to the devices, to provide some rules for the use of the devices, so on and so forth. So it's an, all in all, one percent increase that takes us up to four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars a year. The other question that we had at our last meeting was about the iPad Protection Plan, so I, uh, took a little bit of a dive into that, looking over our last, well, since it started, since fiscal year fourteen. Um, you can see, uh, the beginning balance each year. So we started brand-new with nothing in that fund. What we've received in payments each year, and you can see that it was right around fifty thousand dollars, and then we started to drop down, um, and we'll talk about that a little bit. And the expenditures that we've had, that covers repair or replacement of devices that are damaged. Um, it does not cover adding devices to get a higher number, of course. We have purchased some refurbished devices with that money to replace damaged devices. Um, so you can see the, the cost there with the expenditures, and then the ending balance of each year. So if we look at right now, um, that fiscal year nineteen number is up until the March twenty-seventh, um, ending statement of my, um, P cart for paying for those repairs. And so that includes all of our expenditures this year, up through the end of March, just about. So I would imagine that we would have maybe up to ten thousand dollars more in expenses this year that would bring that, um, ending balance down to right around twenty... that would bring that, um, ending balance down to right around $20,000, or maybe a little bit less. Um, and then if you look back a couple of years, you see, I forgot to put my asterisk, on fiscal year 17. Um, that's the first year that we had no summer iPad distribution. We allowed students to take them home for the summer. So we didn't have that kind of checkpoint where parents came in with their student over an evening time to get the iPad, and at that time, also typically paid the insurance. It was like a reminder. So we've sent reminders, but we haven't had that, at, that physical presence of coming in to get this device and think, oh, I should pay the insurance while I'm there. Fiscal year 18 is when we reduced the price of the iPad protection plan from $25, $20, and $15 respectively, for full-price, reduced-price lunch, and then free lunch, um, down to $20, $15, and $10. So that's been for the last couple of years. And, um, that has been fine. You can see that our fund balance grew up to $76,000. And this is money that only is used for repair of iPads. It's not money that is used for anything else. There is no intentionality in growing the fund balance here. If we could keep it at zero, it would be like the best-case scenario, except for my nerves. But going down just under 20, we probably want to have an option to build that up a little bit, especially providing the crayon this year. We don't know what the costs associated with that will be, um, on the functionality and whatnot. So to, to bring that up just a little bit, back to its original rates of $25, $20, and $15 is what we're looking at for this year. And that's the, the iPad protection piece.
And that's what I've got for you tonight. So, um, I would gladly answer questions and have them. So, board members, this is an item for individual action. So before we, um, have any questions, I'd like to have a motion and a second. So the, the motion would be to support the superintendent's recommendation to approve, um, the recommendation related to technology service, services student device lease as presented. Amy, uh, moves? Is there a second? Second by Jeff? All right, questions? No? Yeah, we've had quite a few presentations, so we appreciate all the work you have done, Kim, in getting us up to speed, and, um, this additional survey information presented. I know you took the time to really engage with the students and think about what their needs are in the classroom. And I think the solution you came up with is, um, I think is, is excellent. I'm really interested in seeing how the Logitech crayons end up playing out and with the keyboards, um, as an optional piece with the, the solutions that you had discussed. So, um, I think it's great.
And just, we can't reiterate, we want to thank, uh, Kim for all of her work. This goes back to November, when we're even further back as we started to plan, and her willingness to meet with anyone who had a question, a concern. Um, she really has laid the groundwork for tonight's approval. So we appreciate all of the work that you have done to get us to this point. And more importantly, the vision and the, uh, desire that you have to continue to integrate the technology as part of the student experience. Well done.
Thank you.
Excellent. All right. So we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of approving the Student Services Student Device Lease, the Technology Services Student Device Lease as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you very much.
Now you only have to do the work.
Thanks.
All right. We are now ready for item number three, which is approval of the policies. This is the 200th series, 406 and 800th series, which we already had, um, an opportunity to look at in a previous board meeting.
Yes, I just want to point out, um, I didn't have any questions between the last time and this time. There, there were a couple of questions that were brought up the last time that had been integrated, uh, into the proposal. The one piece I do want to call out is the new policy, Policy 206, um, that it's governing public participation in school board meetings. This policy really confirms the statement that the chair of the board reads at the beginning of the meeting when we do have people here for public comment. And so the key thing is that there have been some changes since the last time, uh, because there were some things that were duplicate that, if, for example, it pointed to Policy 406. Well, if Policy 406 ever changes, we'd also have to change Policy 206. So trying to link those. And it also just clarifies, uh, the individuals that are authorized to speak at the board, which means a resident of the school district and/or a student and/or parent who has open enrolled into the district. And so just want to point out that that is a, there's some substantial changes from the last time to this time, but they all make sense and they square with how we run our public input for as long as I've been here.
Right. All right. Um, again, this is an item for individual action. So before, um, we have any questions, I'd like to see a motion and a second. Um, this is the motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the changes to policies as presented. Is there a motion? Moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Rob. All right. Any questions? Excellent. Well, um, I, I agree with what Dr. Hillman said in terms of Policy 206. I think that those were common-sense changes that reflect what we've been practicing, so. All right. If there are no other questions about the policies, um, we will vote. Um, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of proving the 200th series, 406, and 800th series as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the item number four, the change order limits. Dr. Hillman?
So in your packet, again, uh, we reviewed this, uh, in detail the last time. This document, uh, that we worked about, Director of Finance of Almerstorf, and myself worked together on with Jim Colseth. Um, this is designed to govern. Of course, we're not going to have any change orders, right? That's our hope. But if we do, uh, these are the, uh, methods that we would govern those change orders. So we would just ask for your approval of that unless people have any further questions or concerns about it.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the change order limits as presented? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Seconded by Noel. Questions? I think that this is, um, a reasonable solution. I really appreciate, um, the thought that you had in presenting, first during our work session, some ideas that you were getting from how others have handled it, and then thinking about what our specific projects were, and who's on the different committees, and then providing that clarification for the project oversight committee of who, who's actually involved to make sure that we understand who's making those decisions. Amy, do we have a question?
So if a change order rises to the level that it needs approval by the board, but everything's under construction and you want to keep things moving forward, do you have a plan to be able to expedite that process, to get the approval, you know, quickly so you can keep moving forward?
So, um, of course, we will always attempt to align those decisions with regular board meetings, whenever we can. If we are in that circumstance, we would certainly use a special board meeting, which of course requires advanced notice. Um, but we're going to make sure that we do it right, as opposed to be expedient. And so if we get to the point where the board does need something, um, I don't believe frankly that the emergence, the, the, um, rules governing an emergency board meeting would apply in these circumstances, unless there was some kind of true catastrophe, which we're not going to talk about that. But in general, we would use the special board meeting approach specifically for approval of any of those kinds of change orders.
Great. Other questions? All right. So we have a motion and a second to approve the change order limits as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our fifth item for individual action is the gymnastics lease. And we had a little bit more information in our packet, um, from Val Almerstorf, Director of Finance.
Um, so included in your packet was, um, the memo you had seen previously. Um, I revised it slightly, um, to reflect, um, I did ask, um, Chris Brown if he would be interested in a lesser term, because there was some concern about the five-year commitment. Um, so he did indicate he would be willing to do two years, um, but the price would be the same. Um, just obviously not the five-year commitment then. Um, so actually, one there is reflecting that change. I did also strike out the build-out, um, just from a stewardship perspective. If we were only going to lease for two years, I would not recommend investing $50,000 to $75,000 in a building that we wouldn't really be in long-term. Um, and so it would be similar to how it was set up currently. It, it worked for practices. It was obviously not ideal. They would not be able to host, um, any needs, but they would be able to practice in town. So, just highlighting those changes. I did confirm with, um, the Farmington Gymnastics Club that they would, um, match the same rate that, um, they had offered last year, which was $10,000 for the season. And then there was a request for some additional sort of side-by-side, at-glance comparison information. So there was an additional, um, expanded chart, I will, I will call it, that shows kind of 17, 18, 18, 19, um, and then the two different options side-by-side with some additional, um, cost for athlete, lease levy impact, um, general fund, square footage, um, all that sort of information. So you can hopefully have all the information you need to, to feel comfortable making a decision. I will point out that I included, um, the equipment, um, in 18, 19 as, as the total, because that is when we made the purchase. Obviously, the equipment will last more than a year. Um, we would typically depreciate it over five years. Um, I suspect it would last even longer than that. So, um, just a note about that. Also, in the previous version of this, I had, in the Kmart projection, the transportation number duplicated, so that, that's been corrected. I had 28.5 for both columns, and it shouldn't have been. So, that was corrected in this version. But really, based on, um, all the information we've discussed to this point, I, you know, we, we could certainly lease the Kmart facility for two years. Without renovation, it would be probably a little more challenging to run any kind of ref programming. Not saying it's not an option. But my, my recommendation would be to do the Farmington lease for one year. It gives the district and the team really the most flexibility if something were to change locally, um, to be able to respond to that. And it gives them a place where they can compete, um, practice. Again, I know it's not in town and it's not ideal. But hopefully it's, um, will work for a year until we can have a better long-term solution.
All right. So, board members, this is an item for individual action. So before we have questions or discussion, um, I would like to have a motion on the table. Noel? Noel?
I'd move the motion.
Move the superintendent's recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. So the superintendent's recommendation is a motion to direct administration to finalize a one-year lease with Farmington Gymnastics and Cheer at a lease cost not to exceed $10,000 a year, with additional bus transportation costs of $20,000 annually out of the general fund. Is there a second? Seconded by Tom. All right. Questions? Jeff?
I did drive up to Farmington last week and talked to the, the gal and, and looked at the thing and kind of all of those things. I mean, obviously, the Kmart option of whatever is extremely expensive. We, we need a Kickstarter that's a kick-the-can, you know, down the road and to do something. I don't know that, I don't know if we're really pressed on making a decision on this, what difference it makes for the team, because really, we don't. I mean, I did have some other options I wanted to talk about, but I, I don't see any real necessarily downside of where we're at. Because obviously, we, I mean, it's, you know what I mean? I mean, it's, I don't think we have a lot of, it takes time to figure out something else. And I think that if we had this in, but I'm just wondering, because there was some flexibility within that. Um, so if we're going to commit to a year, we want to commit to a year, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, we're only committing to the season. Um, there is a clause, um, in the draft lease agreement, which is not included in your packet, but, um, basically with three months' written notice, either party can terminate it or upon mutual agreement. So, um, I will say she has been incredibly flexible, um, and would probably encourage us to, to be here if there's an opportunity. I can't obviously say that for sure.
And that, and I walked all around there. And that, that's, you know, you drive into Farmington, 50 minutes, easy drive up there, obviously. Um, and, uh, I did, it's right downtown Farmington, and there's just a lot of easy places to get to. If I was a kid and was going to go out to eat, there's a quick trip right there. There's all kinds of stuff around there. So, I mean, as far as that vibe and where it's at, um, I mean, and we don't have a lot of options on the table, but if we made a decision on this, we're not committing ourselves forever. We just do it for a year, and then you can keep digging on other options.
Yep. And, and I would suspect that whatever the long-term option is, it's going to take several months to implement, um, and it wouldn't be ready by the season start.
Right.
I think, I do think that that's a key part in this discussion, is that it's May. You know, and, and these, these young people are going to need a start in October, you know, for their season. And so what we know is to be able to identify something else, you know, within that. It seems like a lot of time, but what I'll tell you is that from our experience and working through this over the past couple of years, um, for all intents and purposes, the season's almost here. And so wanting to make sure that this team, uh, has some certainty about where they're going to practice and where they're going to participate this year, I think is really important. Of course, it's a two-step process. We need to have the short-term, uh, approach, and then looking continually for a longer-term approach. And I want to just publicly thank Mr. Brown, because, you know, again, he gave us the space for free for last season. And I know that if you look straight at the numbers somewhere, well, jeez, that's quite expensive. But frankly, that's a fraction of the cost that he will get for it in terms of if it's a retail space. And so even with that, uh, proposal, he was really doing a community service by looking at what was the minimum amount that he could do reasonably as a business owner. So we want to just really thank him for the proposal. We want him to thank, thank him for considering, uh, a shorter-term lease. We absolutely understand that he has a business to run, and he's got to make sure that he's got the greatest amount of flexibility. We need to have the greatest amount of flexibility. And, um, I think that the Farmington Center, it's a, it's a place designed for gymnastics. It is a reasonable option for us in the short-term. And we just need to continue to looking at what are the, uh, long-term options for this team as we move forward.
Other questions? Um, I would also want to just thank, um, Val and Dr. Hillman for your work on this. And Val, I know how much time you have spent, um, investigating options on behalf of the student athletes. And, um, again, you know, just thank you for giving us all the information we need to make a decision.
Absolutely.
And I think, um, making a decision today so that the student athletes have some certainty about what the next season is going to be like, I think is the right thing to do, so. All right. If there are no other questions, um, we have a motion and a second to approve the superintendent's recommendation, which is to finalize the one-year lease with Farmington Gymnastics and Cheer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are on to our last item for individual action, which is the Gleason Property Purchase Agreement.
I'm popular tonight. So, in your packet was the actual signed purchase agreement. Basically, the same draft copy that you saw before. There were no major changes. His, um, agent did add, um, a rider on the end, just confirming that we have agreed that we would close April 30th, assuming, um, the title insurance is clean, and that we agreed everything. And then he agreed to pay the title insurance. So just, there was some ambiguity in the, um, actual signed agreement that he was concerned about, so we just added that for clarity purposes. But basically, once there's a signed agreement, um, we will, he will get the copy to the title insurance, and we have 10 business days to review it. Our attorney is already aware that this is likely happening tonight, and he's basically on standby for when we do get it, um, to facilitate the April 30th close date. Um, and that's, um, mostly a product, just so that we don't have to pay an additional month of rent and pro-rate rent and do all of those pieces. So, just makes it a little bit cleaner. Um, but certainly, if there's concerns with the title insurance, we would not, um, not close until that was satisfactory. Outside of that, if there's questions.
And Val, just clarify, this is the shot property. We are not, we are bringing forward the other property yet.
Um, so I had mentioned this, I think, at our last meeting, um, that he would like to close July 1st on the other property. Um, and so he requested that we just wait on those documents until, um, he had more time to, even though they're similar, he just wanted to, to wait on those until. So I'm anticipating probably the second meeting in May bringing this, um, and then closing in early July on that.
All right. So again, this is an item for individual action. Um, so if, um, there's a motion to approve the purchase agreement as, um, presented by Val, and this is for- for the shop at 720 Gleason Northfield at a cost of $590,000. Is that a motion? Moved by Jeff? Is there a second? Seconded by Amy. Discussion or questions? Noel?
I believe I asked the question before, but I can't remember the answer. Is there asbestos in the building?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Anything else? All right. Once again, Val, thank you for bringing this. And I think this is just another excellent way to be, we've been paying rent and to be able to lease levy this and going forward, it's going to be a good thing for the district. So, so with that, we have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor of approving the motion for the shop at 720 Gleason Road at a cost of $590,000, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Excellent. Items for information, we are on construction update number six.
And we'll have a, we'll have a limited construction update because we, of course, had a great presentation from Wold earlier about the Bridgewater project. But a couple of highlights from April of 2019. Knutson Construction did host the local contractor meet and greet on April 9th. And we had about 35 contractors and had some really great dialogue that has continued long after that, those meetings. And so I want to thank Knutson and Wold for leading that. Really great way to get our local contractors excited about these opportunities. We will have our first core planning team meeting for the Sibley Project, very exciting, starting this Thursday. And so again, you'll see the, the pattern of we complete the core planning group for one project, they move on to user groups, we start the next core planning group. So we're, we will almost be a little more than halfway there. And then the Greenville Park user groups continue to meet. I just want to really compliment Wold on how they have handled the user groups. The user groups are really the messy middle because this is the part of change where people look and they say, oh, that's what my classroom might look like. And you're looking at a piece of paper, you're trying to figure out how would that look in reality? Oh, is this where the bookshelf is going to go? Do we have enough bookshelves? How, literally to how wide and deep do you want the drawers? And so talking with first through third grade teachers about, well, we've got these maps that we need to store and really some great excitement. There's trepidation and excitement because it's getting real. It's pretty cool. So a really great job. And I just do want to reiterate that Sal Bagley, the lead architect from Wold, and Caitlin Chambers, Sam Richardson, myself, did have a little more than an hour meeting with Chief of Police Monte Nelson at the end of the user groups last Friday, asking him to look and comment on the plans. And of course, the Bridgewater one, more straightforward because of the addition. But really some great discussion about how we can continue to balance the need for security in buildings while making sure that it feels like a learning environment. So we discuss things like the type of glass that we're looking at using. In fact, looking at mirrored glass on the cafeteria at Greenville Park where people from the outside wouldn't be able to see in, but you'll be able to see out. And then a combination of that with some 3M security film could provide that security. Literally talking about how high should the wall be so that we can limit visibility in, but still maintain the ability to see. That's the level of detail that, that conversation went to. And again, we are so thankful for Chief Nelson and our community, a really strategic thinker who understands the balance between making sure that kids are safe and it's a safe environment while also maintaining that welcome educational experience. So shout out to Chief Nelson and the Northfield Police Department for their engagement with the process. So that's the report for this evening.
Excellent. I just find this, it's so exciting after, you know, last fall, the reports on how the community meetings were going and just really grateful to the community for supporting this bond election and excited to hear about the next steps.
We keep moving, and it's fast and furious, we'll tell you that for sure.
All right. National Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes, so coming up in the next couple of weeks, we'll be having the National Teacher Appreciation Week along with National Teacher Appreciation Day. And so we want to make sure board members are aware of that as we move forward and buildings will be celebrating in various ways during that time.
All right. Well, we are ready to look at future meetings and we are into May, May 13th at seven. And then a reminder to board members that the second meeting in May is a Tuesday because of Memorial Day, so it's May 28th. And then we'll be into the Monday, June 10th. And in between then, we'll have commencement.
Yep.
So June 2nd is the high school. And do we have a date for the ALCs?
We do. If you just give me a moment, I can tell you exactly when it is. I believe it's that Wednesday before, so I think that that is the 29th, if I am correct.
Right, because we'd be meeting in support on the 28th.
Yep, so the 29th is the Area Learning Center graduation.
Excellent. All right. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Noel?
Before.
Oh, before, okay.
Before I move to adjourn, I would like to speak, and my appreciation is probably the board's for the work that Val does for the district. It is just unusual that you get the recognition, not only one year or two years, but so many years in a row for the work that you do. And it gives comfort to the board, I think, and it certainly should give comfort to the community that we're in good hands. So thank you.
Round of applause.
All right. We have a, we're looking for a second, sorry. We have a motion and seconded by Amy. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Aye, opposed? Meeting is adjourned.